Good evening and welcome to the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Bloomington Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning and transportation issues. Some items, the Planning Commission has final decision authority, and others, the City Council will make the final decision. Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteers that are appointed by the City Council to serve up to three years at a time for a maximum of six. Tonight, we have five, so we do have a quorum, and as well, we have four items before us tonight. But before we begin, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin tonight, for those that are out there watching or may participate tonight, we are in a virtual environment, a hybrid environment, and so, Mr. Markergard, would you give the public some information about how they can participate?
Sure, Mr. Chair, as you mentioned, we are virtual tonight, however, anybody can call in and testify remotely. City Hall is open as well, we don't have anybody here in the audience at this time. But if you want to testify, just call the number on the screen, which is one eight 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 seven four two five zero nine five. And then, once you are in, you would enter the access code for this particular meeting, which is eight four six one hundred one zero nine eight. And then, the operator will patch you through into the meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Markergard, and with that, I think we'll go to our first item, which is a CUP for an instructional center. And, Mr. Centenario, you have a staff report for us?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, the first item on your agenda, again, is a conditional use permit for an instructional center. I'll get to the definition of instructional center, and we'll talk about what this particular instructional center is looking to do. The address is ninety-six oh one Gerard Avenue South, not too far from City Hall, and it's in an industrial area, more or less central in the city of Bloomington. So here's just an overview image of ninety-six oh one Gerard, you can see it's on the corner of Gerard Avenue, South and West Ninety-sixth Street. Directly to the east, you have the Progressive Rail spur that leads to their facility. And then, east of that, you have Ziegler Cat, their rebuilt facility. And then, throughout this, throughout this area, we have quite a bit of warehouse, industrial uses, some office mixed in, outdoor storage. So, in keeping with its industrial zoning and the industrial land use designation. And, you know, frankly, that we have quite a few of these types of buildings in the city of Bloomington, where you have predominantly an off or a warehouse component. In this case, the warehouse is more or less the eastern majority of the building, and then you see some shared loading docks to the east behind the building. And then, it's pretty common to have a small office essentially in the front of the building along what you see as the parking lot and the sidewalk. So, so we have quite a few of these buildings, and that's relevant to some comments I have about lighting. But essentially, the proposal before you is for an instructional center. And the instructional center entity is called New American Development Center, or NADC. And that's, they're a nonprofit based in Minneapolis, they predominantly serve the East African Somali community. As the name would suggest, it's a new American, so it is an immigrant community, and they do quite a, quite a few things. One is, they are partnering with the Minnesota Department of Education, is to provide services for kids, immigrant children who might be having difficulty in school. So, in addition to providing some tutoring services at this, at the center, they would also provide some food, not only to the children, but then they also would have a food distribution use for the community at large. So, in addition to that, like I mentioned, after-school programming, tutoring, they also have community engagement, as well as career development in a, in a number of ways for folks in the community. So, I included the definition of instructional center, it, it's pretty broad. The original intent in an industrial district context was for, more for your trades, or your mechanics, or someone who has, like, technical instruction. But, but it doesn't necessarily only include that sort of technical nature. It also, essentially, it's any educational establishment that has academic, professional, technical, commercial, trade, tutoring. So, it is very broad, and in our industrial areas, this is permitted through a conditional use permit. Now, a street view of this site, a pretty common site, this is during the day, and you're, the only parking use is the mail carrier. But we have, you know, as you could tell, a two-level office warehouse building. The, the second level is really just a mezzanine, so it doesn't extend the entire length of the building. It's really the front office, and then they, a lot of the tenant spaces have mezzanine space. And then, this is just a, kind of a front view of the tenant space that NADC would occupy. And so, really, a pretty good chunk of the building, right, more or less in the middle, I can see the door. You know, I would note that there, you know, you know, obviously, this image is during the day, but at night, there really isn't any lighting to speak of, which I'll get into in a moment. So I have a couple of slides of the floor plan, and hopefully, you can see, you have the, the main entrance, which is on the lower right. And they have, they've identified different uses essentially for these different spaces. Small office area around the reception. Given the, the changes in the building, they would have to upgrade the bathrooms, actually have to build a couple bathrooms. There's only, I think there's only one bathroom there today. And then, they have different educational areas between technology, homework help, art program. They have an area dedicated to training and career building. And then, in the upper left, you see what they've identified as warehouse few, food distribution. And that's really for their food bank, for lack of a better description, where they'd be providing food to the community. We did ask them to prepare a plan on how they would, essentially, how they would accommodate students within this space. And this is what they provided, essentially, tables and chairs, and identifying, they'll be able to help quite a few, quite a few kids in these programs. Again, you see the different areas identified between homework help, art, tech, technology, and then, more of a open space just for their food distribution, which presumably would just be a warehouse with food and non-perishables in a more of a warehouse setting. And it's just another image, it's kind of mixed in, the text is small, but it says mix of tables and pallets, so that would be the, the food warehouse. You know, one of the things that we did recommend as a condition of approval is to provide more detail on how site circulation would work. The applicant, who'll be able to provide a little more information for you tonight if you'd like, would have quite a few number of kids coming between, more or less between five and eight after school. And depending on how many kids come in on a particular day, there could be a lot of, you know, potentially congestion when one session ends and the next session begins. So one thing that we'd like to see is just how the applicant can try and organize that, whether it's identifying particular spaces or areas to drop off, where to pick up. What we really don't want to have happen is it kind of be a free-for-all with a lot of cars, a lot of kids, and we certainly don't want it to be a safety hazard for children. Now, so, we have a condition of approval recommending that they provide a little more information before they begin their services. And then, going back to lighting, you can't really see it very well in this image, but for this entire parking lot, as far as we could tell, there's only two lights. One, if you could see my cursor, this is one of them. And it's a, it's a non-compliant fixture, because it's probably been there for thirty-plus years, and there's one other one along this building elevation. And we believe that this is very insufficient for this type of use, especially because we live in Minnesota. And if folks are coming and going at between five and eight PM in the winter, it's going to be dark. And not only is it a code requirement to upgrade the lighting, but we really think it's necessary to, for this to be a suitable, suitable use. And I think it's relevant to provide a couple examples of similar situations where we had conditional use permits, not for instructional centers, but in this case, it's for like a athletic training, but it was a change of use within an office warehouse building, and that triggered the lighting to be brought up. So I've circled some wall packs that were retrofitted to a very similar building on West Ninety-eighth Street. And these lights were installed because of the conditional use permit, or that's what triggered that. So, it has been done here on West Ninety-eighth, and then, again, this is along Penn Avenue. There was another, a CrossFit gym, another athletic training facility, and they, they had to install some lights as well. So there's, I think this image, I show four, and then there's another one behind that tree. But again, the point being, we really do want to improve the lighting to improve safety, especially because a lot of these activities are going to be going on at night. So that, we are recommending approval, subject to several conditions that were included in your staff report. I would want to mention a, the date of the Planning Commission final approval. I was off by a day in the staff report, I didn't account for the federal holiday on Monday. So I think in your packet, it said the final approval would be, be in place by four thirty PM on January eighteenth. That's actually January nineteenth, so next week, Wednesday. But I'm available for questions, I believe the applicant as well, and I do have the recommended motion for you there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Centenario, any questions for staff commissioners? Not seeing any at this time. Mr. Markergard, is the applicant available?
Yes, let me ask Mr. Centenario if he knows who will be speaking on behalf of this item.
Sure, Mr. Chair, Mr. Planning Manager, the, the executive director of NADC is Azad Alaweed. I, he, I did confirm he was going to be able to attend, so hopefully, he was able to call in or join us virtually.
Yep, he is here.
Hello, Mr. Alaweed.
Good evening, Glenn, Mike, and the rest of the commission, I thank you so much, I really appreciate for your time. As you explained, well, actually, that's the purpose of this activity, this center is to increase our reach to the East African, you know, immigrant kids. And we, we've been trying to increase not only the enrichment activities, but also training in a, in a, in artistic ways, giving kids opportunity outside of schooltime activities for, for science, computer trainings. So that's the purpose of this facility, and, and as you mentioned, some of the concerns that you said about the lighting, actually, I think Mike shared with us about that about a, a, almost a month ago. So we fixed it, those lighting, and we already put that lights, I think, about two, two, three weeks ago. So the lights already has been replaced, so there is no dark there at all. We fixed that. For the other concern is that the parking, we, we've been doing what we call carpooling and drop-off and pick-off, so it won't be any issue at that as well. Everything else, I think you said, that's what we are planning to do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alaweed, um, do you have more?
Not only for, the, also work with a local school districts for, for, for helping the kids, homework help, giving them, you know, helping them to connect with their counselors and deans. We work also with the Department of DIT for youth career training, how they can be able to be in the pipeline of workforce. So we also do that kind of work with, with our Department of DIT.
All right, thank you. All right, commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Go ahead, go, go, go ahead, Commissioner Abdi.
Thank you, Chair, I couldn't reach that little raising hand thing.
That's all right, I saw your hands, so we're good.
Thank you. As I said, it's good to see you again. I, I guess the question I had, and maybe you kind of referenced it a bit about deed funding or servicing you. Are your client or the students and the families you're servicing outside of Bloomington predominantly? Or do you expect to engage kids from Bloomington Public Schools? Because we do have several high schools and middle schools in the area.
Oh, thank you. First of all, New American Development Center used to have a MOU with Bloomington Public Schools when superintendent, what's his name, I think he left now, Louis Fatsuski? I forgot, I couldn't pronounce, the previous superintendent. And also, Cabal High Schools, like Kennedy, we've been working very closely with their kids. Actually, we've been training a Bloomington Public Schools special ed teachers. My background is a teacher, I used to teach elementary high school in math and physics. So as a, as a, as an immigrant, a person from the same socioeconomic background with this, a lot of this East African Somali immigrant kids, we've been working with, with Bloomington Public Schools even before we created this facility. So this center, which is about nine thousand square feet, is going to be, is, is not only be serving in Bloomington, but also kids from Richfield, Edina, Eden Prairie, even the neighbors are able to get access to. We are not going to, you know, ask kids, you know, away. So, so I do, we work together in another capacity and another level with the city of Minneapolis, the great job you've been doing in the economic development. We also partner with the city of Minneapolis with that service. So if you have any families who really need service in terms of mentoring, leadership development, youth stay away from trouble, all that kind of leadership development training, you, you can connect with us, we are more than happy to help.
All right, Commissioner Abdi, any further questions?
No, thank you.
All right, and it looks like Commissioner Albrecht has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question for you is regarding how folks, you, you already mentioned this just a little bit, but I'd like you to elaborate on it just a little bit. How would you envision that the students would travel to the site? And, and I'm, you said something about carpooling, but my question is, do you believe that there would be anyone at any point walking or taking public transit to the site to receive the services?
No, we are not, you know, first of all, we are not providing transportation as an organization. We are a small, community-based, nonpartisan organization, we don't have buses, like, you know, bus schools. What we're doing is, we are asking parents to, families to bring their kids in, but we encouraging them to bring us a carpool. Most of our, our families, they live in a, in a certain areas of low-income apartment buildings. So families, they came from same area, so we encourage them to, to do their carpooling or to, you know, to come together as a group. So we are not expecting, you know, be able to either, either come as a walk-ins, you know, walking to the space or as to the busing, no.
All right, Commissioner Albrecht, that answer your question for you?
It does, thank you.
Okay, all right, any other commissioners with questions? All right, not seeing anything, thank you, Mr. Alaweed, and we will now go ahead and open the public hearing. And with that, Mr. Markergard, is there, there's nobody in the chambers, is there anybody online?
Yes, Mr. Chair, let's check in with Landell Pease. Landell, I will unmute you now.
There are no callers on the line, continue.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, all right, commissioners, seeing nobody in the chamber and nobody online that would like to speak to this item, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I can't see hands right now, Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so moved.
All right, I, we have a motion to close public, is there a second, Commissioner Abdi?
Second.
All right, commissioners, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye by roll call, Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself, motion passes, public hearing is now closed, open to discussion, commissioners. Maybe I'll go first, I'm, I'm glad to see, again, we have, as Mr. Centenario noted, we have a lot of these buildings, and I've been noticing a lot of these buildings have vacant or for lease. I'm glad to see a use that meets our requirements per conditional use permit. Not only that, does a good job of, of reaching out and helping the community in general. With that, I, I have no concerns with the application in front of us and would support it. Any other commissioners with thoughts? Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would echo those comments. Yeah, I think we've got the, a few outstanding things that look like they're taken care of in this process, so I have no concerns. And wait, see if there's anyone else with a hand, otherwise, I could make a motion.
All right, any other commissioners? Not seeing any, I think the floor is yours, Commissioner Roman.
Thank you, in case PL two zero two one dash two four eight, having been able to make the required findings, move to adopt a resolution approving an instructional center at nine six zero one Gerard Avenue South, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
All right, commissioners, we have a motion, is there a second, Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
All right, commissioners, we have a motion and a second in front of us to adopt the resolution approving an instructional center at ninety-six oh one Gerard Avenue South, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor say aye by roll call, Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself, motion passes. This item is a final decision unless an appeal is received by four thirty PM on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Again, this is a final decision unless an appeal is received by four thirty PM on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Moving on to item number two, which was a redevelopment comp plan, map amendment, rezone, and preliminary and final development plat. The applicant, applicant has requested continuance of this item, and let me get to the details. There we go. Has requested continuance of this item until January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. As Planning Commission members, as you recall, we've been given guidance in the past that at this point, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And again, on this item, which is also known as case PL two zero two one dash two five seven, there is nobody in the chambers at this moment to offer testimony. Mr. Markergard, is there anybody online that would like to offer testimony?
Yeah, Mr. Pease, I will unmute you now, do we have anybody online for testimony?
Uh, there's nobody on the line at this time, continue.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, commission members, based on that, I would entertain a motion to hold open the public hearing and continue the item until the January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, in case PL two zero two one dash two five seven, I move to hold open the public hearing and continue the item to January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht, all right, commissioners, we have a motion in front of us, is there a second? Commissioner Abdi?
Second.
All right, commissioners, we have a motion and a second in front of us for case PL two zero two one dash two five seven to hold open the public hearing and continue the item until the January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. Any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor say aye by roll call, Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself, that item is continued to the January twenty-seventh Planning Commission meeting. Moving on to item number three, which is a conditional use permit, and I believe, Mr. Johnson, you have the staff report for us.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission, can you hear me okay?
Uh, you're coming in a, a little broken to start out with, but you seem to, to clear up as you went.
Uh-oh, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Great, sorry about that. Um, the application for you this evening is a cultural campus, the application is a conditional use permit. Um, and the proposed, uh, the proposed location is seventeen oh one American Boulevard East. Uh, the entity who would operate this use is Afrik Hospitality Group LLC, and their representatives are available for you this evening for questions. So I'll begin my presentation here. The subject property location is just to the west of Highway seventy-seven, along American Boulevard. Uh, it's just to the south of Great Wolf Lodge, if you're familiar with this location. Uh, but it is part of the Cedar Business Center, so this is kind of two matching office warehouse buildings, longstanding in this area. Uh, surrounding uses, they do have residential uses to the south, there are some fourplexes along East Eightieth Street. And then, to the west, there is a hotel, and there are some other office buildings in this area. Uh, American Boulevard East, of course, is a arterial roadway, so fairly good traffic volume on American. Um, and I'll get to a kind of panned-in oblique image of the site. So the proposed cultural campus, again, is on the, the building on the left, on Set seventeen oh one, and they would occupy roughly fifty percent of the building, it's a fifty-five thousand square foot building. And their, their occupancy would be twenty-eight thousand five hundred square feet approximately. So you can see the driveway to the site is on the north side, they do have a shared, a drive that they share with the office warehouse building to the east. Uh, so something to note there, there is also a shared drive at the very southwest corner of the site that they share with the hotel, that's done via access easement, and that still exists today. Um, other notes about the site, there's two hundred and five parking spaces, there's a pretty dense, vegetated tree line along the south boundary. Uh, and then you can see there is, of course, sidewalks along American Boulevard to this site. Terms of land use and background, this application originally came to you in the form of a privately initiated city code amendment back in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, this is a newly created, uh, take a look at it, but in general, a cultural campus is a multi-use facility with no one use exceeding fifty percent. Allowed subuses include restaurant, business, incubator, offices, indoor recreation, entertainment, and other collections of uses that you would typically find. The applicant provided some examples of which at the, the first, but this code amendment was approved by the City Council, it did make this a conditional use in the FT two zoning district, and the site is zoned FT two. Uh, another important note about this is that construction has already actually begun on some of the subuses, and some of those subuses are, are, it sounds like I'm having trouble a little bit with the audio.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, just, I want to pull the, I want to pull the commissioners here, make sure, are you able to hear them? Are you clear enough, are you getting the staff report?
It's mixed, I mean, I can understand what he's saying, but it's intermittent.
Okay.
I think I do as I will call in via my telephone as well. I apologize for that. But while I do that, I'll continue here along with my presentation. But what I was saying is that construction work has begun on some of the subuses of the campus because these are permitted uses within this zoning district. So when a use is a permitted use, say, an office in an office building, if someone wants to renovate an office, they can simply submit a building permit. And of course, the proposed use is reviewed for informants with various aspects of the city zoning code, like parking. In this case, for a restaurant use, we would look at things like odor control, certain utility requirements, trash and recycling storage area. Those types of things are triggered when there is a change of use, like a restaurant. So just to note that a building permit was issued for restaurant and office demolition and build-out in certain aspects of the space. And that is a legally permissible action on the part of the applicant because those uses are, by themselves, are permitted uses. But so hopefully that provides some background in that regard. Is the audio coming through better in the last minute there?
Yep, sure seems like it.
Okay, hopefully we dodge that again in the future here.
We do got Glenn as the backup technology guru here though, too. So in case it goes bad again, I think the suggestion was that we might share the PowerPoint here while you talk.
Sounds good. Thank you, Glenn. Okay, so I'll continue on here. Here is the proposed site plan. One other matter of background related to this use is that, if you can see my screen, there was an administrative final site and building plan application that was approved that just had to do with creating a new building entrance. Again, that undo itself is not something that would require Planning Commission or council action. It's just simply creating a new building entrance. So that just has to do with the exterior materials and creating the necessary sidewalk area to egress the building. That was done as an administrative zoning application earlier as well. So just a heads up on that. And then with the site plan, there's no other exterior changes proposed as part of this use. One thing that staff would like to see, particularly in situations where you have conditional use, where the, when comparing the existing condition versus the proposed condition, if there is a strong likelihood that the proposed use versus the existing use is going to generate more pedestrian or bicycle activity than the existing condition, staff, as part of the conditional use permit review, in the in the spirit of health, safety, and wellness, would like to see a sidewalk connection be provided to the public sidewalk at American Boulevard just into the drive aisle and parking area. So it's not a significant stretch of sidewalk that has to be accommodated here. It's a pretty short sidewalk. I know we had a similar application that dealt with a similar issue yet previously this year, or last year, rather. But in this case, there's not a lot of grade or physical challenges that should make that a challenging connection to make. And the reason that staff is recommending that is that what we don't want to see happen is pedestrians or bicyclists use the driveway. Vehicles are turning in off American Boulevard, which again is a higher volume road and a higher speed road. So we just want to avoid pedestrians being in the site driveways, particularly during the winter months when visibility can become an issue, too. So that's part of that recommendation. In terms of where that can be accommodated, more than likely, that would happen over, of course, the box goes right where I don't want it to go. Well, yeah, over here, if you can see my cursor. Sorry about that. Here is the floor plan of the proposed cultural campus. So you've got a variety of different uses. Again, the offices and restaurant had to do with that building permit that I mentioned and are under construction. So you see the restaurant and cafe in the blue, light blue shade. Offices at the southwest corner of the building in kind of that dark rust color. You have the business incubator, which really, if I failed to provide that in the introduction, that's really the big driver for this application, is the group that is creating this campus intends to provide a whole bevy of different programming, an assortment of different programs for African and African diaspora entrepreneurs to get workforce training and develop different skills that can help them get and sustain strong employment. And so they have different rooms set up here intended for different types of employment training and maker space. They have a teaching kitchen. They have tailoring crafts, workforce training rooms, an IT lab with a technology focus. So that's really the, I don't want to prioritize or rank the different subuses in the campus, but it seems that that is the most important aspect of the campus from my discussions with the applicant. So getting that workforce training, business incubator use is critical to its success here. And then in the yellow shade in the central portion of the building, it's labeled on your floor plan as a multipurpose space, but that is where the event center activities would occur. They are, and I'll talk about parking here in a minute, but what they're proposing to do is utilize that multipurpose room for various types of events on nights and weekends only. That was made pretty clear in their application. So that's where that would be set to occur. There are some various other common spaces in the facility, trash, recycling, storage areas, bathrooms. And of course, there's circulation areas as well. But that's the main part of the floor plan that I wanted to touch on. Getting back to the definition of a cultural campus, I mentioned that it's at least a minimum of three subuses in the definition. So this gives you a sense of what uses are included in this campus. And the definition was clear that no single use could exceed 50% of the floor area of a campus. And the idea behind that was that not one single subuse of a campus tends to dominate the full mix of uses. So this just gives you a proportionality of the different uses within the campus. Here's the furniture plan. I just wanted to provide this because in case there was any question about how do you reach some of the seat counts and parking calculations for the restaurant use and the event center use? Just a note for the event space, we calculated both ways with respect to parking. You can do a third occupancy of the seat count, but you can also do a third occupancy of the the fire code occupancy. And at the end of the day, the seat count actually is slightly higher than a typical fire code occupancy for this type of space. So, but just to show what the furniture plan would look like with respect to some of those restaurant and event space uses. So getting to the parking, this is one of those scenarios where you have 50% of the building is this cultural campus. The other proportion of the building is occupied and has existing tenants of an office and warehouse nature. The applicant did provide a list of those tenants and their hours of operation as an exhibit to their application. Staff did review some of those businesses. And it appears that they are correct that the primary use of the building by all the other tenants is typical business hours during weekdays. And so this is one of those scenarios where, under the city's parking ordinance, there is different means and measures such as proof of parking or PD flexibility or doing, you know, traffic demand management plans and things like that, or if there's increased transit. One of the ways to reduce parking requirements for an overall building in order to efficiently use a site is to go with a shared parking agreement or arrangement. And so what that typically looks like, if you've got different uses, you could be two sites next to each other, or it can be different uses within a single site. And that's the case in this instance, where if you've got clear, different peak parking behavior or times where the parking is needed for one use but not needed for the other, that is a situation that lends itself well to this shared parking solution. Again, there's a lot of different public policy reasons why you don't want to overconstruct parking in your community with respect to stormwater management, impervious surface, heat island, other things. Just having empty parking lots is not a good outcome for the city either. So this is one of those solutions to reduce that. So in your packet, in the staff report, we provided two different scenarios. And this lines up with how the applicant presented their information. The numbers aren't exactly the same. And the reason being is that staff calculates our parking based on gross square footage versus net square footage. So it might look just slightly different than some of the materials they put together. But at the end of the day, the parking still shows that it is compliant in both different scenarios. So in the daytime scenario, again, the parking supply at this site is 205 spaces. Our code would require 179 parking spaces during that daytime business use. And so that does leave some surplus for, at the transition point. Staff is happy about that. And then getting to the second scenario, evening and weekend use, there is a surplus of two parking spaces. The parking requirement there in that instance is 203 parking spaces. And keep in mind that this involves the cultural campus use being in operation during both these times. Restaurants can be operating during the day, for example. There is adequate parking for that. It just really has to do with the event center is really the big driver. And so as part of your recommended conditions of approval and something that was offered by the applicant in their materials, they would not operate the event center between, until the hours of 5:00 PM after the typical business workday. So that's the limitation during weekdays. And then, of course, they could operate it on the weekends when the other typical businesses are not in operation. So that's the general outline of how staff is recommending the conditions of approval. It has to do with restrictions on the event center use. And that's something that really is the driver for the parking and would be, continue to be observed and would be the kind of governing condition going forward for the site. Related to that, too, as well, staff is recommending an additional condition that has to do with the other tenant mix. So when we do get building permits for build-outs, as I mentioned, for, you know, a whole variety of different office buildings, industrial buildings throughout the city, the planning and zoning staff are reviewing those building permits. So we do get a good idea of what types of uses are moving in and out. You know, do you need a conditional use permit? You know, what is, are you complying with our parking requirements? So in practicality, planning staff is doing that work on the front end anyway. But suffice to say, it's important to record a condition on the deed that the property owner be aware that staff will continue to monitor or to evaluate the use mix in the other portions of the building. If they have another use move in that has a significant weekend use or occupancy, that's something that could throw the parking supply out of balance potentially. So that, again, just with the eye towards effectively managing the parking, those conditions are in your packet. Other miscellaneous issues, similar to the last application on your agenda, this site does not have conforming lighting. They do need to install code conforming lighting. Of course, there's going to be evening use of this facility. So they must provide us a lighting plan. With respect to the teaching kitchen, just a quick note here is that along with the review of the restaurant and that kitchen used with the previous building permit, staff did require, as the code requires, odor control and grease interceptor, some of those things you typically see with that use. The teaching kitchen at this point is not intended to be anything beyond just teaching prep and other things, is my understanding. But if they wanted to kind of ramp up the different types of cooking activities in the teaching kitchen, they would have to come into compliance with fire suppression and some of these other requirements, you know, depending on the type of cooking that you're doing. And if they were to, if that space would be used for any commercial purpose, they would have to get a food service plan with environmental health as well. The trash and recycling area in this building is code compliant. So really, just a condition stating that to continue to keep that indoors and your typical conditions associated with signage. We did receive some emails registering some concerns about this use. And I would, I don't want to speak for the submitter, but I think the crux of the concerns registered focused on parking and the evening use of the facility. So those were distributed to you via email as well.
Yes, we received that.
Staff, yep, staff is recommending approval. And again, just as a reminder, this is a City Council action. So the Planning Commission is an advisory body in this instance. This is one of those uses that does require City Council approval. Happy to take questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Just, I have maybe a quick question. Talk about the teaching kitchen and the restaurant and in the the site plan, I wasn't quite sure what the difference was between those two. Are you able to point those out in that?
Yeah, absolutely. So the purple area on the, Chair Solberg, the purple area on the floor plan below you here, this is the commercial kitchen that's utilized for the restaurant and cafes throughout the campus. So that has a food service plan, that has, will have odor control, will be hooked up to a grease interceptor, et cetera. Up here in the eastern portion of the business incubator, that's where there is a room labeled as teaching kitchen. And again, that's more of a workforce development educational space. So that's kind of the difference there.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification. With that, Commissioners, any, Commissioner Albrecht, looks like you got your hand up already.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a follow-up question on the teaching kitchen. Mr. Johnson, what signals the increase in requirements to the teaching kitchen? You said that the, there was just food prep going on there. Is it actual cooking? How will the applicant and thus the operator know at what point they need to put in all of their, the additional requirements?
Yeah, Chair Solberg, Commissioner Albrecht, thanks for that question. So a lot of it, I mean, I don't want to speak for the applicant. I would encourage them to answer that question, too. But I think some of these spaces are not yet programmed yet. I think their design, you know, the very detailed design by the architect in terms of actually building out the space has been focused on the restaurant and office uses at this time. So some of this stuff is conceptual to the point of how it's actually going to be outfitted, each specific space. And so I think what we're attempting to do with our discussion of it in the staff report is that, you know, depending on what type of equipment you put in there and what type of cooking you're doing, it might trigger some of these additional requirements that you would see for a commercial kitchen. So just be aware of that. You know, certain types of hoods, for example, require fire suppression. I mentioned, I talked about grease interceptors and odors and things of that nature. So it's really just kind of being, trying to communicate with them as best we can that depending on the types of activities, it might trigger some additional requirements.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Mr. Johnson, will you pull up the site map again? And there are two buildings on the site. I'm wondering the total number of parking stalls, the 205. Would that be all of the parking stalls, even the ones all the way to the east of the site? Or is that just on the western portion of the site? And can you just let me know where are you counting the parking stalls?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, Chair Solberg, Commissioner Albrecht. The 205 parking spaces is the parking supply of 1701 American Boulevard West. It does not include the stalls on 1801 or stalls across the way there at the hotel. So what we're talking about, 205 spaces, includes this parking lot here, of course, and then it includes all of the spaces that wrap the west and south side of the building. There's parking on both sides of that drive aisle for the majority of the west side and south side.
Right, I have one more question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Albrecht.
So related to that, in the parking, does the 1701 have a shared parking agreement with 1801? Or is 1801, if they do have spillover, are they allowed to park on the other side? I mean, it seems like a quick jump over to, you know, that northern parking lot to 1701 from the, that, you know, the west side of that 1801 lot. So do they have a shared parking agreement, or is it just kind of they're friendly?
They, we, yeah, Commissioner Albrecht, we did locate the shared access easement. We have not located a shared parking agreement. I know they're not owned by the same entity. So not to our knowledge does a shared parking agreement exist. But of course, the project was originally developed in concert. But ownership has changed hands multiple times, and we're not aware of shared parking at this property.
Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Johnson, just a quick follow-up, because I know that one of the conditions is, of course, that sidewalk connection. Is that likely to take one of the parking spots? Or is it, in your site plan here, as I look at it, going to be as simple as making that connection right there?
Yeah, Chair Solberg, I think it'll Yeah, Chair Solberg, I think it'll be as simple as making a connection west of the driveway, we wouldn't want to see them lose any of their parking supply, and I think that there's some ability to meander that walk in a way that would miss some of that, some of that, that landscaping as well. So this gives you a good idea of kind of this area that we're talking about, the grade is not so substantial that it'll cause problems with respect to that, and I think you can get it in there. What it's really just attempting to do is keep pedestrians out of that driveway, when you got people making those turning movements on a higher volume, higher speed roadway.
All right, yeah, thank you, that's, that's good to know that there's availability there, and keeping them out of the driveway, of course, is going to be important coming off a minor arterial, so. All right, commissioners, any further questions for staff on this particular item? Not seeing any at this time, Mr. Markergard, we'll go to the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Jake Steen, Pam Anderson, and Mukhtar Sharif representing the applicant team.
All right, I don't know who wants to go first, Mukhtar, or?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I'll go ahead, Jake Steen with Larkin Hoffman.
Okay.
Attorneys, my address is, oh, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we sure can, Mr. Steen, go ahead.
All right. Address is eighty-three hundred Norman Center Drive in Bloomington, and I represent Afriq Hospitality Group. As Glenn mentioned, we do have Mukhtar Sharif, the C E O, as well as Pam Anderson, our architect, on the line, and will be available for questions shortly. I'm excited to be here before the planning commission tonight. As many of you may recall, this has been more than a year in, in the making, and early two thousand twenty-one, we started working with the city and within the community on this project, and that ultimately culminated in the zoning code text amendment for a cultural campus, which you may recall. Staff has done a great job of explaining in detail those, the uses that are going to go into this cultural campus, which is primarily going to include elements serving the East African community within the South Metro, Bloomington and, and the Greater South Metro. That, of course, includes the restaurant and office space that is currently under construction, but one of the exciting pieces is the forthcoming workforce development and business incubator center. That's going to work with small, new entrepreneurs from developing a concept all the way to fruition, from A to Z, and, and working, learning skills, and, and growing a successful business. That's also going to include some ancillary maker space, as well as the training facilities, as well as work share, and ultimately, an event center and multipurpose space, which, of course, is going to operate on nights and weekends. We have worked with staff and, and understand fully the conditions of approval that are in place, we don't have any objections to those, and we appreciate staff's recommendation of approval, we appreciate all the hard work that staff and the city has put in over the last year on this. So we're, we're hoping for your recommendation of approval on this conditional use permit, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, as well as also provide, or make, make Pam Anderson, our architect, available, as well as Mukhtar Sharif, the C E O of Afriq.
All right, thank you, Mr. Steen. Commissioners, any questions right now from, for the applicants and their representatives? Not seeing any at this time, Mr. Steen, thank you for being available for us tonight. And with that, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this particular item. And Mr. Markergard, seeing nobody in the chambers again tonight, is there anybody online that would like to speak to this item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one caller, I believe, and Mr. Pease, I will unmute you now to patch them through.
Yes, the caller is six one two nine eight seven for the first six numbers, your line is open, identify yourself to testify, thank you.
Yes, hello? This is, you're on, you're here to testify for the planning commission? Okay, please identify yourself, and I will give you three minutes to go ahead and, and talk to the planning commission.
Okay, Sally Ness?
All right, welcome, Ms. Ness.
Do I start?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The event center should not, the event center should have the number of parking spots that are required by city code, it does not. The cultural campus is a conditional use in F D dash two because it includes uses that were previously not permitted, that the city has determined potentially negatively impact the surrounding area. These uses should have the required number of parking spaces, the event center should have the required number of parking spaces, and then the city should address the potential negative impacts of the use, such as high traffic levels. The event center should comply with the parking requirement, and then the city should determine the potentially negative impact to the surrounding area and create conditions to mitigate the concerns. Valley View School meets the parking requirements and has a condition that when there is assembly, concurrent use of the entire facility is not allowed. Additionally, the proposed ninety-nine parking spaces for the event center is too low, it is based on table seating of two ninety-six, and yet the tables are not permanent and therefore could accommodate hundreds more. My estimate is a total of five hundred and ten people and a need for a hundred and seventy parking spaces. Also, there's an attached lobby of one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight square feet that can be used as well, and unless it is designed so the area cannot accommodate an overflow of people from the event center, additional parking spaces should be required. The cultural campus request to include an event center does not meet the parking requirement and should not be permitted. This is different than the event center meeting the parking requirement and then the city approving the use with conditions to address the potential negative impact. The reduction of previous proposed hours as a reason not to comply with parking requirement should not be permitted. When city adds conditions to approve a conditional, conditional use permit, it should be for a property that meets the requirements. The conditions to approve a conditional use permit should not be used as a way to excuse a property from meeting all requirements. The original request for the event center was for eight A M to two A M, and based on another property, regardless of the property.
One minute left, keep going.
What?
Keep going.
Oh, I lost my, okay, shoot it. Regardless of the property proposes a reduction of hours of five P M to two A M, the city either won't or can't address it. The city has previously stated that the city does not have required hours for a property business regardless of what was proposed. The city has also been unable to require compliance to conditions that restrict a property use. An example is the non-compliance to the condition eighty-two oh one park that limits the gym to five hundred, a condition that goes with the land. The gym has over five hundred too many times and included a council member on social media inviting more to the facility, even though it was over five hundred. If the city has not addressed the non-compliance in the Smith Park neighborhood, specifically non-compliance to the off-street parking requirement, planning should not rely on a condition for compliance and instead require some.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ness, please, please, your comments to this particular item. I will give you another thirty seconds to finish up.
Can I just say one? Okay. Also, page fifty-eight of the staff report, the common summary traffic review states, provide trip generation numbers for the site using I T E trip generation standards. I did not see any trip generation numbers or data why they are not provided, thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ness, appreciate your comments tonight. All right, Mr. Markergard, is there anybody else online that would like to speak to this item?
And Mr. Pease, do we have anybody else on the line?
There are no other callers, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, commission members, seeing nobody again in the, in the chambers, and we've have nobody else that would like to speak to this item online, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner, Commissioner Roman?
So moved.
All right, and is there a second, Commissioner Albrecht? All right, commission members, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
All right, and aye for myself, motion passes, the public hearing is now closed. All right, commission members, any thoughts or discussion on the proposal in front of Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that generally the mix of uses in here that are proposed, and the percentages and the allocations do fit with what is allowed under the cultural campus definition that was passed last year. So from those, in that line, I, you know, this feels like something that meets that, you know, the potential for traffic, we are on a major, more major road here, it's a road that I think can handle that type of, of capacity. The caller from the public talked about concurrent uses, and I think about situations like the example that was given as at Valley View, where you have a single use, not a single use, same, the same tenant, if you will, in all the area, and it may have different uses that the same tenant is managing. I do think that the staff has proposed a solution to that with looking at any future permits for whatever maybe happened in the other part of the building. I think that's probably a reasonable approach, so that can be confident that, that there won't be any conflicts, but I think the ability to review future uses in other parts of the building, I think, should help to mitigate any new uses that would, would create problems, you know, overflow. So on the whole, I think the applicant and the staff have done a good job of trying to navigate some of those challenges, and I, I think I can support this application.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Roman. Other, Commissioner, Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you, Chair, I think as a resident, I, I live there a few blocks from this area, and I think in previous conversations on the commission, we talked about the needs for retail sales and services in the area, and we rarely have anything until we get to Portland on American Boulevard, any, any sit-down restaurant or coffee shop or anything where, you know, so I feel like while the campus center is providing a ton of other activities, I do really am looking forward to how this would bring more walkable services to the area, which we really lack right now on Twelfth Avenue and American Boulevard area. American Boulevard is a very high-traffic corridor, so I do, really don't expect or see a challenge with traffic issues potentially. I guess the question I would have is, or clarification if I'm familiar with this type of activities, anybody concerned about the event center? I imagine, unlike the restaurant to use, I imagine the activities at the, that could, I imagine there would not be an event happening every day, like a restaurant would be open every day. So that would help mitigate any potential concern having high volume of events and event activities like happening every night while the restaurant is also in, in operation. So, and maybe the applicant can clarify if that is an expected activity that would be, that would be happening on the site, but I assume it would not. But overall, I would be in support of the application as proposed, and as a resident of this area, I'm really happy to possibly walk to a restaurant without having to drive off.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Abdi, and since you posed a question, we can ask that directly of the applicant, either, I'm assuming, Mr. Steen or Mr. Sharif, one of you would be able to answer Commissioner Abdi's question about how often you would expect the, the, I guess, conventions area to be utilized?
Thank you, Chair, Jake Steen and Mukhtar, this is a kind of a clunky format, so feel free to jump in if, if you'd like to correct me, but I can tell you that the intent that is that the, it would not be, of course, every, every night that, that the event center would be operating, presumably primarily weekends, and I think it's really important to note that there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a nice symbiotic relationship between, and a complementary relationship between the event center and the restaurant. So if there's an event operating, we can, I think it's safe to presume that there's going to be some overlap of, of the use of the restaurant kitchen, it's going to be likely serving that event.
Sure. All right, thank you, Mr. Steen, appreciate the response on that, and I think maybe to Commissioner Abdi's, or maybe it was Commissioner Roman, I don't, call, somebody brought up as a major roadway, I don't think that, that we're, in my mind, I'm not any more concerned about that than maybe a water park that's in a very close proximity to this, so. With that, I'll go to, I think, the next commissioner, let's see, Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I too am in support of this application, and my questions earlier were really about the parking, and after reading the member of the public's letter to the council staff applicant about their concerns, I do think that there are mitigation strategies if a, an events, if the event center were to, for example, need more than two hundred and five stalls for one single event. I do think that folks have the potential of parking even on the, that eastern side of the lot and spilling over just even slightly. And I looked at the offices and the businesses that are on that, and I know it's not the same building, but that are on the, the eastern portion of that site, and it looks like they have similar hours to the other businesses that are in that, on the same building of sort of closing down at five o'clock. So there is a potential for an additional shared parking agreement if there were issues with overflow of the parking. So given that, and given the amount of parking on this entire site, I would be in full support of this application. I think it's a great use, a great mix of spaces, and I think exactly fitting the definition of the cultural center as approved earlier last year.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Albrecht, and, and just to clarify, maybe with Mr. Markergard, of course, the applicant has provided the minimal parking that's required. If they wanted to go ahead and, and make agreements with other portions of the site, they could do that, is that correct?
Sure, Mr. Chair, they could enter into some sort of an arrangement with either of the adjacent properties to the east or to the west to share additional parking.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. All right, commissioners, I, I too am in support of the application. It does meet what was previously approved for, again, for, for, for the definition of a cultural campus, you know, and I, I think there's a piece here where we talk about no more than fifty percent, no single use, and again, you look at the, the way this is divided up, and twenty-three percent, twenty-three percent, twenty-four percent, sixteen percent, I mean, it, it's clearly not focusing on, on some definition to, to make something happen. This truly does fit within that definition that we approved, I think, what, seven, eight months ago, whatever it was. And again, happy to see another opportunity for small businesses to grow, I think we've talked about this quite a bit in the past with several of the other developments about, wouldn't it be very good for the city to have some of these small business incubators as a way to develop small mom-and-pop type businesses in our city rather than big chains or hot dog stands or whatever, so. With that, commissioners, any other comments? Not seeing any, otherwise I would entertain a motion. A motion to approve, so Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, in case number P L two zero two one dash two five six, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a cultural campus with an existing, within an existing office slash warehouse building located at seventeen oh one American Boulevard East, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
All right, commissioners, we have a motion. All right, Commissioners, we have a motion in front of us. Is there a second? Commissioner Abdi?
Second.
All right, Commissioners, we have a motion in front of us to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a cultural campus within an existing office warehouse building located at seventeen oh one American Boulevard East, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report. Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself, motion passes. This item will move forward to the city council on January twenty-fourth as a consent item. With that, that concludes item number three. Moving on to item number four, uh, which is a planning commission policy and issue update. Mr. Markergard?
Sure, Mr. Chair, looking forward to our next, uh, two planning commission meetings. Our next meeting is two weeks from tonight on the twenty-seventh, and on that agenda, we have the Seagate, uh, technology proposal for an expansion at seventy-eight oh one Computer Avenue. That's a eighty thousand square foot, uh, two-story addition. We also have the item that was continued from this evening, the, uh, eighty-two hundred Humboldt Apartments, hundred and forty-nine units there. And then we have two study items. We have a discussion of hotel and office conversions, and then an overview of, uh, several things happening in the South Loop District, uh, development and, uh, the future expo or potential for the expo. So four items on that agenda, and then the following meeting, the first meeting in February, we have just one item on the agenda, and I want to get, uh, the planning commission's thoughts on that item, uh, what it, it pertains to the miscellaneous issues ordinance. Couple of years ago, the planning commission requested a study item in advance of any public hearing on the miscellaneous issues ordinance. So this would be a, a study item. It's the only item on the agenda. However, this year, we feel like there's not a lot of, uh, very meaty items within that ordinance. So at your option, what we could also do is bring that straight to public hearing at a later date and, uh, not have the study item on the first February meeting, in which case we would, uh, cancel that meeting. Um, we don't have anything time-sensitive on the miscellaneous issues ordinance, so if something did come up, we would be able to continue it and have more, uh, discussion. So just want to get your input on that particular item, whether we should, uh, have a study item in advance of the public hearing.
All right, Commissioners, any thoughts on that, uh, considering there's not necessarily a time constraint, and we can have that during a regular public hearing and continue it, have the discussion, continue it, move on, that sort of thing? Um, I know where, where I would, uh, prefer, but, uh, what do you have to say? Don't all speak at once. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it'd still be good to have it as a study item, and if it's not time-sensitive, let's just tack it on to another meeting. Or if the, I know you mentioned there's a couple other study items coming up before that, I don't know, um, how time-sensitive those are, if that, if there's a balancing of the amount of time in a meeting, but, you know, if it's not urgent to do it, I think we could just tack it on another meeting at the end.
Okay. That's one. Other Commissioners, thoughts? Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would leave it up to staff, um, to recommend, it sounds like, uh, Mr. Markergard is, is recommending that, um, there's not a lot to study in the study item, so I would lean towards, personally, I would lean towards canceling that meeting and, um, having a thorough staff report before, uh, the, uh, before that comes before us.
Sounds good. All right. Commissioner Abdi or Commissioner Cookton, did you have any thoughts? You're okay either way. Commissioner Abdi?
I was going to say, uh, ditto what Commissioner Albrecht said, and I would lean to staff's recommendation to, um, possibly canceling that if there's not a heavy, um, agenda item on that, or a lot of discussions expected on that, uh, or a lot of changes coming out of that, that is, outside of the miscellaneous adoptions. Um, yeah, so I'm open to either or.
Okay, all right, Mr. Markergard, uh, I hear if you think it's not so meaty and that we can get through that in a regular meeting, that, that's, that's okay. Um, so with that, we'll, we'll leave a bit of a discretion to staff.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, all right. Anything else, uh, Mr. Markergard, on those issues or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's all I had this evening.
Okay, and I do want to clarify, I understand, um, one of the things maybe coming forward is this kind of sidewalk connection that staff is revisiting. We've talked about, I think we talked about that a little bit tonight, but, um, also regarding Nine Mile Brewing, is that correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, on the miscellaneous issues ordinance, um, one of the, uh, potential changes, uh, would, uh, address the situation of when tenants are changing, and the new tenant would add a lot of pedestrian trips, or the potential for additional pedestrian trips, that it'd trigger a sidewalk connection, at least from the, uh, street-side sidewalk into the site.
So it would, would require, okay. All right, um, Commissioners, anything for staff tonight? All right, uh, with that, then, I'd like to thank our, uh, applicants and those who provided testimony tonight, and with that, that concludes the January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two Bloomington Planning Commission meeting.